Good evening.
I'm gonna take it down.
Good evening, and it's six thirty. I call this right about meeting quarter. Please rise for the pleasure of the evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, council board members, district staffs, and community members. As a reminder to us all, I wish to look for our students with the knowledge and skills to empower them to achieve their dreams and full potential while becoming responsible citizens in the Manhattan world. Mr. Anderson will be joining us tonight. He is just at the start of our community engagement task force to welcome that group of citizens, community members, sorry, the military again, community members, and then he'll be coming back over time. That's why he's not here right now, but he will be here for the rest of the meeting. Our first item for tonight is adoption of the agenda. Are there any questions or articles being made on the adoption of the agenda? All right, is there a call for motion to the October twenty-seventh meeting? Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Orkin. Any discussion on that motion? None? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. I'm raising your hand.
Aye.
All right. Motion prevails. Thank you. Our next agenda item is the St. Star Award. The St. Star Award is established to publicly recognize St. Francis area school staff, students, and community members at its co-awards meeting to highlight the positive and impactful work happening in the district. This month's St. Star Award is presented to Monty Spears, the custodian night lead at Cedar Creek Elementary School for being recognized as the 2025 state-level Facility Worker of the Year by the Minnesota Educational Facilities Management Professionals Association. I got through that sentence. There we go. Monty has worked in the district for nearly thirty years after starting at the high school in April of nineteen ninety-seven. He has worked at Cedar Creek Elementary School since two thousand. The award from the MASMS recognizes an outstanding facility worker who is not in a management position. Monty received multiple nominations for this award, including William Dial, the St. Francis Area Schools Custodial Supervisor. William said, "Monty is more than just our night custodian. He is a vital part of our school community. Monty consistently goes above and beyond in every task he takes on, always eager to help out with anything that is needed, whether it's responding to a last-minute request or tackling his daily responsibilities. He does so with a cheerful attitude and a genuine smile that brightens the entire building." About the honor, Monty said, "I'm very thankful for the award, but mostly thankful for just being nominated for my work here at Cedar Creek Elementary School. Besides all the staff and coworkers, the thing I love most about working at the district are all the kids and families that I have met over the years. I love coming to work every day. Please help me in celebrating custodian night lead Monty Spears."
Speech. Well, like I said. Started at the high school in ninety-seven, and then like I said, Cedar Creek until two thousand. All the families and staff I've met and, like I said, I just, you know, just enjoy it for work every day, you know? With kids, just love the kids. And District Fifteen has been the best job I've ever had in my whole life, so just thank everybody, all the people that I've met, you know, Bill Chuck taking over, people around us, those guys are doing a great job. Just, well, just thank you, guys. Appreciate you for working here. I'm so pleased.
You do need.
That was thirty years.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate this so much.
Our next agenda item is consideration of visitors. We have one individual requesting to speak tonight, so you'll get five minutes. Barb Anderson.
Five minutes. Well, it first started as, thank you to Monty for all the years of helping kids through basketball and helping new referees and being just a great attitude, an example of an attitude that the kids picked up on, that all of us as volunteers picked up on. And so, thank you so much.
First of all, thank you, Barb. You're awesome.
So, I will have you take one down and pass it around. Just a quick, so you have one, and then people know, we, this is an opportunity to Skills for Disagree Better, and it's an online, just a one-eating thing through Mental Health Connect. Our church, the Methodist Church, works with Mental Health Connect and connecting resources for people who need mental health services. So, we're able to have this available to anybody really in the community who wants to go online. You just click register here, and it will register you. In a day and age when everybody is, has a lot of disagreeing to do, how can we learn to do that better? We are gonna disagree. That's fine. But there is a good way to do it and a not so good way to do it. And I believe that we as a school district can choose a good way to do it, and in, which is us individuals choosing that first. It's not dumping it on a school and saying, "We as individuals can choose and learn tools to disagree in a healthier way," then which then teaches our children, and it also teaches other adults. So, it's a, it trickles through every place. So, I just wanna bring this to you, to share it, to listen to it, and that's, that's it, knowing we can, we can do it, we can do better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. As always, Barb, we appreciate the engagement. Our next agenda item is consent agenda. There are currently nine items in tonight's consent agenda. It will be a roll call vote. Are there any questions or requests to remove an item from the consent agenda prior to a motion being made? Ms. West.
I request to pull approval of assurance of compliance five point eight for individual discretion.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Mr. Humphrey.
Can I pull five-five and five-seven? Just spare a couple of real simple questions, or one comment and one question? Please.
Five-five and five-seven?
Yes.
Any other? So, we will need a call for motion to approve the consent agenda as listed, minus five-five, five-seven, and five-eight. Ms. Anderson? Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Orkin, any discussion on that motion? No discussion. Again, it's a roll call vote. If, first, if you're in favor, you're gonna say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Humphrey?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Shonra?
Aye.
Ms. Parker Cullen?
Aye.
Mr. Orkin?
Aye.
Ms. West?
Aye.
And I, aye as well. Motion prevails. All right, we'll go in order. So, the next item is five-point-five, a total extended trip request. Mr. Humphrey, you had a question on that?
This one's a comment. Mr. Benjamin Wisham, or Ben Craig, I'm sorry, over at the ALC, I think. And this is before the trip, and some, like, great information. I really appreciate that. This is exactly what someone who's actually asked to approve something is looking for, so I really appreciate that, sir. Thank you, Mr. Ben Craig. I know, on top of all the other great things he's doing there at the ALC, this is exactly what we're looking for. When we hear about things being approved after it's already happened, or like, what, you know, we didn't have any time to talk to none about this, this is beautiful and wonderful, and I really appreciate that.
Want to add to that? So, this trip is for four-twenty-one of twenty-twenty-six, and we received that, well, prior to today's meeting. So, I wanna thank Benjamin, or Ben Craig, for submitting this in a timely fashion for us to review and, and vote on. I appreciate that.
Okay. We will take a motion to approve five-point-five.
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve five-point-five? None? All in favor, is that what you mean, a roll call? All in favor of the motion to approve five-point-five, signify by saying aye. I'm raising your hand.
Aye.
Motion prevails. No opposition. Okay. Our next item is five-point-six, approval of the monthly investment?
None.
Sorry, five-seven, approval of the substitute teacher rate of pay. Mr. Humphrey?
This is the one I pulled because I had a question and perhaps a comment. Is a teacher in Minnesota, as a substitute teacher, allowed to be anyone who holds a four-year degree? I know my wife is from Illinois, and her brother, when he graduated college with a four-year degree in criminology or something, he was able to sit in as a sub, and I just thought, what a, what a great way to make up for subs that are so hard to get. And I was just wondering if that was the case, if anyone can confirm that that's the case in Minnesota, and if that's the case, two hundred dollars per day, anyone with a college degree who's looking for work, that's, you'd help the district and you'd help yourself, because that seems like a very fair compensation package.
So, I'm gonna give you a quick answer, and Brandon will tell me if I'm wrong, but the answer is yes. You still have to go through the PELSD licensing.
Okay.
To get your substitute license.
Sure.
But a four-year degree is required.
Okay.
For the majority of the cases, they're, they did expand. There's limited amount of fields that could have made a degree. There are specialty, like an automotive or a oral language, or I think care design was on for an A degree, and then there's a, an emergency short call program we have not participated in yet where some of the two-year degree can do it. But the chair's answer for the majority of the cases and two years ago is exactly that.
Fantastic. Background check, of course. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, what a great thing. It would, we obviously, by increasing this from one-eighty per day to two-hundred per day, are in need. There's an unfilled need, and you hear about it all the time. So, go ahead. If you're looking to make some extra scratch, sign up and get ready to be a sub at our district. I think that's a great opportunity, with some good compensation. I'd like to make a motion to accept that as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to approve five-point-seven?
Is this comparable with other, what other school districts are compensating? Do we know?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, the, the average, this is just slightly above the average pay for our area. However, we have a couple of districts that are quite a bit larger than us that are a little bit higher than the average, and so this puts us a little bit higher.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? All right, if you are in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. I'm raising your hand.
Aye.
Mr. Humphrey, are you in favor?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
So, no opposition? Motion prevails. Is Brandon back? What do you think, a roll call? All right, next one, five-point-eight, approval of assurance of compliance. Ms. West?
So, my question, I, I would just like, because we have a lot of people in the audience and, and watching online, stakeholders and people of that, that aren't familiar with the assurance of compliance and how that's going to work with federal and state law that we might be in conflict with in the state. So, my, my question is just to have for any kind of review, what the assurance of compliance is, so that people attending and watching have an idea of what that's all about.
Ms. Nelson?
Certainly. So, the assurance of compliance has been in place, annual requirement for decades. I didn't look back far. It's been in place. But it is a requirement by the state of Minnesota that school districts assure that they are compliant. I am aware that there is some discussion about some laws that are, or at least one on that list that we are assuring we're compliant with. However, I'm not aware of any laws listed that we, we do not have to follow at this point. I know there's, there's some discussion about some of them, but right now, we are required to follow those and the state that require us to, to take this action.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Nelson before we have a motion? All right, see, is there a motion to approve five-point-eight? Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shonra. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Humphrey?
So, the way I see it, I think the question is over number four and Title IX. And, I mean, I know the vast majority of the public, both Democrat and Republican, are, you know, hashing this out, but it seems like a lot of people are still in favor of, of the way that the numbers come out, going by biological birth. But I, that is, that may be something that you'd agree or disagree with, but as, like, I believe state law supersedes federal law, or federal law is tied to federal financing. So, if we end up not going with the federal law, in my opinion, it should be more local control, so the states, or even though personally I disagree with the state stance on this, I would have to support the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution, which gives them the power to the states, even though I disagree with it, but, and that's fine, and then the battle becomes, you know, at the state level. I just, and I think that, so we vote for this right now because this is the current law despite being in courts and stuff like this until something comes out after that. And then, I think we should still remember that, I mean, like, back when the book situation was going on and everyone was screaming for local control. I mean, I, I'm personally in favor of no federal Department of Education, so if we lose that funding, that's kind of two birds with one stone as far as I'm concerned on this, on this angle. But if you're a proponent, if you're, if you're a proponent of local government, like, I mean, this, this kind of checks two boxes. But the Title IX thing is gonna be hashed out soon, and I, I don't know which way we're going on that. I know there's a lot of, I got, I got an anonymous card from someone in the mail, and I really wish this person would have left their name, so I'd love to have that conversation with the person. I'm not anti-trans. I just don't believe that boys should be in girls' sports or locker rooms, and that's where, like, we differ in opinion here, but that'll all be hashed out in the courts, I guess. I, I don't know. I just, it's, it's hard to remember that local control is, is the best control, even though I, I disagree with what's going on there, and it is in the courts. So, I guess that's why, in this case, I'm voting in, in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Just a reminder that if laws change after the school board adopts a policy or something like this, we do comply with changes in laws, and we'll see updates that come through as well. That's standard practice across the way that we do it in all areas. Any other discussion? All right, roll call. Okay. This will be a roll call, so if you are in favor of the motion, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Humphrey?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Shonra?
Aye.
Ms. Parker Cullen?
Aye.
Mr. Orkin? Uh, no. Ms. West?
Aye.
And I as well. Motion prevails. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, which is number six, information items in reports. We are super lucky tonight. We have the student council report. Jack, I gave you forty-seven minutes to get piled from this year of this school year. You shared on the floor, okay?
Sounds great to me. I think Grace will listen up in the beginning of the school year, so I'll just take it off from there. Good evening to the community, the school board, the chair, superintendent, finally back in the cabinet. The student council is very excited and once again be honored to be invited here to a student, to a school meeting to not only show our representation, but to have our voices heard. And I seem to have missed the memo of not wearing the DECA dress, but here we are. So, student council doesn't have that much more coming up currently. However, we currently have two items that are coming up. First of all, this weekend, we have our MASCMAHs Craig's Leadership Forum, which we thank you all again very much for allowing our transportation and for our overnight stay at Craig's Resort on Gold Lake, where we will not only learn a lot of leadership skills that we can bring back to our community as we have in previous years, but where we will also learn other skills and other events that we can potentially plan from other school boards and honor societies across Minnesota. And then our second event, that is the only other thing that I have currently heard of that we are doing, is our community night, which is tentatively planned for December twelfth. I say tentatively because we're still looking for a Santa and Mrs. Claus somewhere on the North Pole, and we will hopefully find them soon. But then otherwise, in a little St. Francis High School-St. Francis roundup, sadly, our football team fell in section semifinals to the number-one seeded Monticello. Volleyball also fell in section semifinals to the number-one seeded Zimmerman. Our back-to-back conference and section championship-winning girls' soccer team fell in the quarterfinals of the MSHSL Girls' Soccer State Tournament against the third-seeded Academy of Holy Angels. Otherwise, this past weekend, just today, we brought seventeen students, with six being returning and eleven being new members, to DECA's Back to Business Conference in Minneapolis, Minnesota. We had three students, two new and one returning member, who be recognized for placing in the top two in their role-play section, those being Seela Brennan, Gray Sunstrid, and then myself, Jack Humphrey. And then in other good news related to sports, we are sending not one, but two St. Francis High School cross-country runners to the MSHSL Cross Country State Tournament, with Ryder Mould having placed third in the Section five A A B, and Anderson Wolf placing second in the meet to qualify both themselves to the state tournament. Are there any further questions?
Mr. Humphrey?
I'd like you to, if you could. Jack, not only is he good at debate, but he's quite brave. This weekend at the Halloween, at the Halloween Debate Tournament in Woodbury, they dressed up as costumes, and Jack won as Trump. You wanna turn some, turn some eyes, go to something like debate dressed as Trump, and it was, it was pretty remarkable. Can you give us any of it?
So, yeah, last year in speech, I participated in an event called Humorous Interpretation, and I had one of my characters as Trump. So, I decided to go this weekend, and frankly, they told me that I was a very good debater. They told me I placed third in the meet overall qualifying to the Tournament of Champions for one of my two bids. But they told me I was a very good representative, very good senator, presided over the final round, won, beat a lot of people, even the state champion, placed over them. But otherwise, my dad always flatters me and puts me on the spot having to do my little impromptu Trump.
I just think it's hilarious. Thank you for doing that. Not the last time I'll embarrass you.
I just want to say good luck to Ryder, and knowing he's inspiring well, that's getting me on my mission to my slum. And I want to ask you, do you, as a student council high school, have anything to do with trickle-down effect that's going on with the student council? I had a lot of elementary-age students approach me about running for student council at the elementary school. It's not the same as what you guys are obviously doing, but they are running for student council within elementary schools, and I think it's the coolest thing that they could get involved in, if that's something that you're interested in.
I'm assuming by trickle-down, you mean like interest and wanting to run student council?
Well, not just that, but do you guys have anything to do with the elementary schools doing that, or is that something?
As far as I know, it's each school's own basis. I know I was on East Bethel Student Council, being elected both my fourth and fifth grade years, and then middle school, I was in all the years, and I've been on it all of my high school years, and I've so far never heard of them being interconnected within the schools.
Cool.
That's as far as I know.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Shonra?
Well, last week, there was the blood draw, and I went, and when I was there, it was pretty much at capacity. Do you have any update on that?
I believe, if I'm remembering my numbers correctly from Ms. Bergman, that we had sixty-two units, units of blood donated, and that we saved a hundred and eighty-six lives with those units of blood.
Awesome.
I'm confident you had your numbers right.
I also. As soon as I get past twenty, I have to find out what to do with my hands and toes.
Any other questions or comments? Jack, thank you as always. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is the transportation report. Our transportation supervisor for the community council will provide an update and answer any questions.
Good evening. The start of the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six school year has been smooth, except for a few bumps. All of our routes have drivers, and we have two extra drivers to cover when our regular drivers are out. We have fifty-three licensed school bus drivers, twenty-five bus EAs, four mechanics, two route specialists, and one safety manager. We currently have two drivers in training. The usual sickness hit our department in weeks three and four this year, and that necessitated some creative thinking to cover the routes. We never canceled the route or ran a route late, and I anticipated that those things could have happened. We have a core group of drivers who are available at the end of their regular shift and are always very willing to drive routes and activity trips, and this results in overtime. Our mechanic staff and office staff helped to cover the routes and get our students all the places they need to go. Between the office staff and the mechanics, we have four licensed school bus drivers. The mechanics let me know that at the end of week five, they had driven more in the first five weeks of school than they drove all last school year. When they are driving routes, their regular mechanic work doesn't get done. This leads to breakdowns on the road and a shortage of buses on days when multiple activities are going out and we have buses down. The older vehicle in the fleet are requiring a lot of maintenance, and parts can be hard to find. We have purchased parts on eBay because they are not available through our regular suppliers. This is expensive and time-consuming. We have had four engines rebuilt, and two and a half of them have been installed in buses so far. Our yearly report has been filed with the Minnesota Department of Education. We have seventy-two vehicles, and we put almost one million miles on our fleet last year to transport our students. We have fifteen vehicles that are classified as type-three vehicles, which can transport students, but they don't require a CDL to drive. These vehicles are important in our fleet. We have seven van drivers who are casual employees. They transport McKinney-Vento students, care and treatment students, and they drive some of our students who require special care. We signed a three-year propane contract this year with Dean Oil. We usually sign a one year for two-hundred-and-ten-thousand gallons. Dean Oil came to us with a proposal, and the other two bids we received were not comparable. Behavior continues to be a top concern. We get many calls from parents and school leaders, and we watch a lot of video every day. For the most parts, parents are receptive to our calls and the discipline we hand out. Discipline ranges from a warning to bus suspensions. Sometimes we are asked to show the video to the parents who don't think their children are capable of the things they've done. Video is shown at the district office only. Unruly behavior on buses is a safety issue for everyone on the bus. Standing up and changing seats while the bus is moving is dangerous and causes unnecessary distraction for our drivers. Vaping on our buses is still a problem, along with inappropriate language, name-calling, inappropriate touching, and pushing each other out of the seat. Keeping the bus on the road is the number-one priority for our drivers. We have ordered five new buses this year, and they will begin coming in January, with the final two coming during the summer. A new camera system is being installed in the buses, which we will be able to view in real time, and we won't need to pull hard drive from the buses when they arrive at the garage. The video will be stored in the cloud, and we will be able to retrieve it after the fact. This will be a time saver for office staff, and the quality of the audio and video that is recorded should be better than what we have now. We were able to put a new garage floor coating in the bus garage. The first epoxy coating was put on in two thousand and two. It was worn and slippery when wet. The new coating is a textured polyaspartic coating, and it has filled in the imperfections in the old concrete, the shop area, the wash bay, and the employee lounge. It has brought a bright new look to, into the garage. If you haven't been there, come on over, because it really looks good. We also had some repairs made in our employee parking lots and bus lot. Potholes and uneven surfaces were corrected, resulting in frequent hazards. On October third, we had a bus fire, and I would like to confirm all the facts that had made their way on the social media. The bus was a twenty-twenty-four International Model Three Thousand. It was a propane-covered, seventy-seven-passenger bus. Bus seventeen had twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-seven miles on it, and it was the newest bus in our fleet. We took delivery of it on December eighteenth of 2023. It was built at the Navistar plant in Tulsa, Oklahoma. I visited the Tulsa plant in August of 2024, and I was impressed with the facility and with the pride the workers showed in building buses for our nation's children. Our driver Rick did exactly the right thing when he evacuated the students out the front of the bus. The younger students are used to the steps. They are not used to jumping out the back of the bus. The bus was empty in less than forty seconds. The propane system that fuels our buses has a safety system that worked beautifully that day, and I will explain it very simply. The propane tanks are in the back of the bus, and the engine is in the front, and there is some piping in a hose that runs between the two. When the hose was severed from the heat of the fire, it shut off the propane. There's a float that travels in that hose, and the float goes up when the propane is going up. Once the hose was severed, the float went to the back and shut off the propane that went to the engine. Unleaded and diesel-fueled buses don't have a fuel safety system like that. We use Collins Brothers Towing out of Elk River. They have had a very successful building business for many years, and they know exactly what they're doing. When I called them, they didn't have the big record immediately available. I suggested they send a flat bin. Cody Collins arrived with a standard-sized tow truck, and he went to work getting the bus ready to be towed. So I'm, I'm gonna pass around just a couple of pictures. That's Cody with the small tow truck that he brought. Um, all of the pictures that I show you are online pictures that I took at the scene that day, but there's a similar picture to that one that's out there. But these are all mine. I have not shared them with anyone. Cody arrived with a standard-sized tow truck, and he went to work getting the bus ready to be towed. The drive train had been disconnected, and an auxiliary light system had been put on the back of the bus. When the wrecker arrived, Gavin Collins was able to back up and hook up the bus, and they left in a matter of minutes. So here's the bus traveling down the road with the big wrecker on the front, exactly how it should have gone. An investigation team was sent by Navistar and our dealer, Hope and Transportation, on the tenth of October. We met and we looked at what is left of the bus. The investigator, Kirk, has a theory on what happened, but admits that it may be impossible to ever know for certain what the cause was. We came back to St. Francis, and the team of seven looked at the other eight international buses that we owned, and he could not find anything that would confirm his theory. I feel confident in their inspection of our buses. The international name is on the side of every bus they build, and they have an interest in finding out and knowing what happened that day. Recalls are handled by the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration. It takes a minimum of four months to start a recall investigation, and there is a lot more interesting information on that process on their website. The other two pictures that I'm going to show you, um, these are the propane tanks on the bottom of the bus. They look like they're brand-new. This is the picture from what is directly above those tanks. This is pretty amazing. I will pass around a picture of me then and my dad. Zion Parkway neighbors were amazing that day. They helped calm the kiddos and contact parents. They kept watch, but were not intrusive as we went about our business. It was a beautiful day in the neighborhood there. Rick will tell you he was just doing his job. He is truly a hero and should be admired, and he is a very humble person, and he and I have talked often since the third. The relationship that he has with his students and his parents should be mirrored on all of our buses and by all of our drivers. Not everyone is capable of that. All of the practice and protocols go out the window during a real-life situation. Following your gut to make it happen will never steer you home. In other news, our district and our mechanics were featured in the National Trade Magazine in January, and that was followed up by a front-page article in the Yanaka Union, thanks to DAX. I was contacted for information for another article in another national publication to be coming out soon. Stay tuned. Transportation is always on the move. Questions?
Any questions or comments for Greg?
Uh, friend that doesn't know that's great, so you're welcome. Thank you, Rick. I did not hear anything to say, but you saved my little girl. No more questions?
I have to be up in there. For starters, thank you for setting the record straight. Appreciate that. Again, um, key boarders, they're, they're doing their thing. Thank you for coming. And again, I spoke on it last week. I commend you personally for you did that day, being on site when you were called and controlled and here. Diffuse that as a good situation, better than you put in that I ever seen. Rick, again.
I agree.
Thank you. I have kind of confidence in what you guys do. Rick, you've been with my oldest, he's now a freshman. The way that you treat those kids every single day like they're your own. Words can't express how that makes me feel as a father and as a parent and as a community member for this district, and I commend you for that as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Thank you. That's all I got.
Mr. Shaw? Yes, thank you for the in-depth reporting and all that you do. And Rick, thank you so much for how you handled the situation. Uh, to change gears a little bit, we've got the schedule later on in this agenda. Wondering your thoughts on late starts? I know we've talked about it in the past, I'd like for you to tell them your.
Uh, ninety-minute late start day starts in our office on Tuesday at about two o'clock. The, the problems that we deal with are things like, we transport students out of district, and those schedules are not our ninety-minute late schedules. So when we have a driver that has some kids up at Rum River and some kids here in our district, we're having to find another driver to, to drive one of those. The other thing that happens is that we have many students that come to school at an abbreviated schedule. They come for an hour or two a day. And then we get calls, what time are you picking up our student today? We don't know that because you haven't told us what time they need to be there. It's, it's just, it's a nightmare. People, people don't know that it's happening in a lot of cases. We spend a lot of time on the phone. The bus just drove by. Really, what school does your student go to? Well, they go to Cedar Creek, or they go to SFP. That's because we're picking up the high schoolers right now. It's ninety-minute late start day. People are outside with their elementary kids, waiting for the bus, and the bus drives past them. And then they call us. They don't know it's ninety-minute late start. They don't know how to add ninety minutes onto their regular time, and we've been doing this for years. Um, it just, it doesn't end until we lock the door at five o'clock. It's, it's just never-ending. Plus, we have our regular jobs to do that day. We're still moving over four thousand students every day. So it's, it, it always works. I always have a bus parked outside the front door because somebody got forgotten or their time changed, and we need to go and get them off and get them under the door. It's just, it's a lot. And I guess the question that I have now is, have you talked to the parents about what the parents think about the ninety-minute late start? Because what we get on our end from the people who are calling us is, they don't like the ninety-minute late start. It's, you know, if you're not thinking about it, and I can appreciate you wanting to have it on the same week, the same day all the time, but there are things that make a little more sense, like, why did we have ninety-minute late start on the day before MBA when a ninety-minute dismissal might have been better? How many kids actually miss that day of school because they want to start their long weekend earlier? There are just things that seem like they would make a little more sense.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments here? Mr. Anderson?
Quick question. How many times per week are you forced into driving the bus? Morning or afternoon routes?
It, it depends on the week. I drove today morning and afternoon, and I expect that that's probably gonna go on this week. Last week I drove one.
Yeah, it's a big issue because you have that full-time job. And, you know, so hopefully we'll be able to find more drivers so you can kind of focus on the primary position. But thank you for filling in along with the mechanics and, you know, others as well. Appreciate it.
Hey, I have one question for you. You talked about the, the video system. Uh, what is the timeline for that installation and when will it be in all of the buses?
It depends on how much money. Ideally, it will be in all the buses. We're starting it in the new buses that we're getting, so it'll be January before we have it on three buses. We did put in a similar system in our vans because all of our van cameras went out. They were, they had outlived their life. And so we put a similar system on, and it works great when we would go in and see what's live. It's awesome. It'll also tell us things like, um, if the driver is distracted by a phone, or if they're heartbreaking, or if they're speeding, but we can go in and look immediately and see that. So I'm anticipating that we're really gonna like this on buses, but the first ones will be in in January.
Thank you. And then, uh, I'm just gonna speak on behalf of the board again, but we are extremely proud to have you as an employee. And Mr. Graffin, we are extremely proud to have you as an employee at our district, so thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is six point three nutrition services report. Our nutrition services program supervisor, Wendy Coak, will provide an update and answer any questions.
Good evening, school board, superintendent, and community members. I have a PowerPoint, but it's more of just a placeholder, so as soon as that's out there. I don't know if all of you know, but our nutrition office is located at St. Francis High School. So, um, that's where you will find us. We're, we're not housed at the district office. That's where we are. Um, we are currently in the third year, um, but, oh. This one. Okay, thank you. We are in the third year of the free school meal program, and I know everybody was excited when that first came on. Okay, participation. I wanted to talk about that. So, um, September twenty-twenty-two, look at that as our base year. That was the first year, uh, or the last year, where parents were paying. September twenty-three, first year, the twenty-four, second year data, and then now I have, um, September twenty-five data. You can see that our breakfast has increased. From September twenty-twenty-two, we've had a ninety-one percent increase to breakfast, and we've had a thirty-three percent increase to lunch since the inception of the free school meal program. Now again, with the free school meal program, the students get, um, their first breakfast of the day is free, and the first lunch of the day is free. If they buy second lunch, those, those items cost. Staffing-wise, you know, last year when I was reporting, we had, um, some open positions. This year we have, um, we still have some open positions, but we are finding that we are getting stronger applicants, applicants that are coming to us with more previous experience, and we're able to get them into the kitchens and working faster. And we also have a full substitute list. That's been nice. Um, last year we did not have that situation, so a lot of times when we posted in frontline, we did not get subs. Now we're posting and we're getting subs, so. We still have our professional standards training for our employees, and, um, this year, they will receive, um, six hours of training for employees that work twenty hours or more. And then, um, part-time staff, they will receive four hours of training, and our managers receive ten hours of training. And this, um, in those key areas that are listed there, uh, nutrition, operations, administration, communications, and marketing, so that everyone's on the same page, people understand, you know, why we menu the foods that we menu, what the meal patterns are, the importance of following the menu. This past year, we had a food service audit, and it was a kind of a dual audit. It was USDA and Minnesota Department of Ed came in, and, um, they reviewed everything. We get this type of intense review once every five years. So, um, this pretty much took up the whole month of April. They, um, visited all of our, the schools that they identified that they wanted to audit. And this year, of course, they also included Trinity because we do food for Trinity as well. So a few things came out of the audit, and, um, one of the items was smart snack regulations. And we, um, as a district, found out that there were some other groups that were supplying food as well, and they had to also meet the smart snacks standards. So, um, for my position, I'm more of a resource for that, and then, um, those, the other groups need to also follow the rules. And, um, we learned more about that with the outcome of the audit. I think we're on a good track right now. And what are those standards? Um, so you can see from the visual on the screen there, um, they're really looking for the same types of items that we're serving in the school meal program. So if somebody else is bringing food in for the students, it should match the standards that we need to follow during this school day. And then, um, since it gets a little complicated, there is an online calculator. Staff that are deciding to do fundraisers or whatever during the school day, selling food to, to students, they can take their individual product, run it through the calculator, and make sure that it meets those standards. The calculator is pretty easy to use, but it, it walks you through all these questions. Okay. Synthetic food diets. We've heard a lot in the news about this, and, um, on the, on the national level, they're, um, going to eliminate the synthetic food dyes in our food supply by January twenty-twenty-seven. And so they're, uh, going to be reformulating a lot of the products that we use. We're seeing it happen already. We went through, and last spring, we had identified twenty items that had, uh, synthetic food dyes. Now this school year, we've eliminated almost all of them. We have three items left that we're trying to find suitable alternatives for. Um, one of the items is a fruit salad that we make at the high school, and it contains marshmallows, which we were kind of surprised to find out that marshmallows have blue dye number two, or number one. So, um, it's, these colorants are showing up in foods that you don't expect them to. So as soon as we can, um, identify, and like I said, this, this salad is something that's on the menu once every six weeks, and yes, it is one of the kids' favorites. So we're trying to identify a different place to get the marshmallows with all the colorants. Okay, sodium levels, um, in. In, by July 2027, there'll be a 15% reduction in sodium levels that USDA guidelines allow. So I have up there the current sodium limits. If you look at, like, for instance, grades nine through 12, and then you look at the future limits, the sodium levels are going down about 200 per day. So our plan is to identify our high counts sodium days and work on finding some replacement products. We have to be very careful with that because a lot of the items that have a lot of sodium are student favorites. So we want to make sure that we identify an alternative that they will like just as much. It's very similar to how they started reducing the sugar levels for breakfast this past year. And what ended up happening was a lot of the cereal manufacturers eliminated the synthetic dyes and the sugars at the same time. So it was a really good outcome. Okay, and then my last slide has to do with fund balance. So with the free school meal program being that we're getting a balance of funding from the state and beds, we are fully funded right now. We're not having that gap in funding where we've been asked to provide meals, you know, and not receive payment for meals, which have been happening in the past. So we are receiving the money that we should for the meals that we're serving. So we can focus now on our food choices, our staff, and equipment. So right now, we've identified that our freezers and coolers at the schools need to be replaced. We have a replacement schedule figured out. A lot of these items are original with the building. So this past summer, we replaced the freezer and cooler, the walk-in freezer and cooler at East Bedlam. And it was, it was old. It was as old as the original building. There had been some parts and compressors and whatnot replaced, but the structure of the freezer and cooler was as old as that building. So we're starting, next year, we'll be doing two more schools. And then following summer, we'll do another two schools. Any questions?
Any questions? Just a random question. Sodium levels, is this like per item? Or how do you figure out what a kid is going to be like at the high school?
It's how it's menu. If you're referring to the sodium?
Right.
Okay, so yes, so we look at what is menued. And yes, of course, the student may not select all five of the items, the components to the menu, so.
But you still have to stick to that.
For the five components of the meal, we have to be within that sodium limit. Yeah, it's difficult.
A couple of questions. Remind me again who provides or who we use for the food?
Primary vendor. Yep, that's IFD.
IFD.
Yep.
Are you finding that the healthier choices, the food coloring reduction, and salt are available through them?
Yes. For an example, when I went out for a primary vendor last spring, we got a market basket of goods. And we could view, you know, what items we spent the most money on. And one of those items was muffins for our breakfast program. We took a look at the brand. It was the oldest muffin maker brand. And it did have some synthetic coloring in it. So we have since moved away from that. It had some artificial flavors and synthetic colors. So we've switched away from that and went with a different brand.
So you're able to adjust within your primary vendor?
Yep.
Okay.
We also participate in the Minnesota Food Buyers Group. And so they also are, you know, this is on their radar as well, getting rid of the synthetics and reducing sugar and everything like that. So they have also gone through and said, you know, these are the brands that a lot of the schools in Minnesota are using, you know, for that reason.
Oh, that's good. My other question was, when you say other groups have to follow this guideline?
Yep.
Can you give me an example? Is that like when parents bring food in for a classroom party? And, or is this a football thing? What type of other games?
Well, there's a large group at the high school that was selling some items. And since they were selling during the school day, their items also had to follow the school lunch regulations. And it could also be a fundraiser item. So if a group, like, let's say, music department or something, I just, that's just an example. But if they had a fundraiser to raise some money, and let's say they were selling something, that those items that they were selling, because they're selling them individually, has to meet the same pattern, the same nutritional standards that the school lunch program has to meet when we're selling items individually. So the rules are a little bit different for the meal because the meal is looked at as one complete unit. So that's how we're able to serve, you know, some of the things with our meal. We can do an occasional dessert because we're not looking at those items individually. They're looked at as a meal, a full component. But when things are sold individually, then they have to meet the individual standards, the smart snacks standards.
Could I add some additional comments? Again, a reminder is that Wendy is not responsible for the non-food service groups. Wendy's in charge of the nutrition services. And then in St. Francis, I guess I'm the one overall. And I oversee smart snacks for the other groups. But I always rely on Wendy to better understand it. And so the smart snack standards apply to products sold to students during the school day, which is from midnight until 30 minutes after the end of the school day. So that's what they call a school day. So for example, concession stands that are occurring after the 30 minutes do not have to follow the smart snacks standards, according to the federal government. Some examples of changes that have had to be made. There used to be a vending machine in the lunchroom. Did not have a timer. And, you know, it was, it was there for a good purpose, to get food to kids who might be after school. But because, you know, some products weren't meeting those standards, you know, in the end, everyone agreed just to remove the vending machine from the school. Another example was, is the Deca store. And so Lisa Marie worked over the summer at the beginning of the year to look at, you know, all these different kinds of products in order to kind of rework the menu for Deca stores. Now all the products, you know, meet those standards. You know, fundraisers, again, if the intent is to sell those products to students during the school day, we have to follow standards. If there's a booster club selling products to parents, like if they're early childhood vending center, it's a different ballgame. You know, they have more flexibility. So I hope that answers your question.
That's very helpful, yep.
Mr. Humphrey?
This kind of follows up on that. Who defines the school day as midnight until 30 minutes after school?
I believe it would be the United States Department of Agriculture.
Any rationale there?
I think what they're trying to do is make sure that people are trying to sell right before breakfast, so.
Okay.
That'd be pretty early in the morning.
Yeah, they did come up with some sort of.
Well, they say 30 minutes after. I would have said 30 minutes before perhaps. Or, I mean, are we just, I've never bought anything from the school after midnight.
That one isn't our call.
Yeah, no, no, no. And will these standards go away when the Federal Department of Education goes away? Are we anticipating that?
No, because these are USDA.
Okay, USDA, okay, thanks.
Again, there's a strong push, I think, you know, at the federal level and state level to provide healthier options to kids.
Well, and it's all an eye to beholder. I just, I mean, the reason why my kids aren't allergic to peanuts is because we didn't freak out over peanuts. And we gave them peanuts. And now we find out that's fine to do, and it's actually ideal. And the reason why people are allergic to peanuts is because no one gave anyone peanuts. It's like, duh, you know? And then they're asking for 50% grains by weight? Please. I haven't eaten 50% grains in two years. It's, I just, I think it's a moving target. And I really appreciate the job you do because holy cow, you got to keep up with all these standards. And a lot of people, it's just kind of a shot in the dark on a lot of this stuff.
Yeah, that's one thing. A lot of these items that we are able to source through our vendor, they are specific products made for the school meal program. So they have the 51% whole grains. They have the right percentage of fats, the lower sodium. I think there was a snack item this summer that, I think it was Cheez-Its. But we, we were able to find a Cheez-Its that was made from whole grain. And the other group, you know, they just picked it up at Walmart. Wherever they got it, I'm not sure. But you can't buy these things in the stores. So it's nice that we're able to work with a vendor that sources to schools.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Shawna?
Yeah, I asked a question maybe before you. Your feelings on 90-minute late starts?
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, the 90-minute late start, at the very onset, when the talk started going, I did put my two cents in there. I was hoping that that wouldn't eliminate breakfast for the kids. And it didn't. So we've always done breakfast. I know sometimes it's a challenge because they're literally, the elementary students are having breakfast. And then about 30 minutes later, they're having lunch. So that is a challenge. And, yeah, you know, and scheduling. You know, sometimes a lot of our staff, they're working for schools because they have students. And if their student's not getting on the bus, well, then they can't come to work until after their student's on the bus. So it does create a challenge, yeah.
Ms. West?
Are you able to track the amount of waste? Has it increased since the free foods?
You know, free foods. I guess it wouldn't be very scientific. But because we do the food recycling, so we have the food recycling bins, the pig barrel buckets, I guess people like to call them. And we do that at our elementary levels. We have not seen an increase for the number of barrels that we're going through each week. So we have not seen that. We've seen breakfast counts go up. And we've seen lunch counts go up, but not the corresponding waste. Now, I feel good about that. But I look a little bit further when I think about that. We've been so fortunate to have the whole school working with us to get our breakfast counts up. So a lot of times, the kids are coming down, getting their breakfast, and bringing them to the classroom. So there could be garbage, and I'm sure there is garbage, that ends up in classrooms that I'm not seeing. And I'm not, you know, it's not going in pig buckets because it's up there, so. Yeah, I don't know that I'd ever get a clear number on that.
Mr. Humphrey?
Well, I would like to say kudos to you and your crew because you're obviously doing something right. You'd think I was, Jack was eating at Tria every day when I get his little pictures of his wonderful meal. And he loves it, so I appreciate the work you guys are doing. You're putting together a really good product, and people are literally eating it up, so kudos.
Any other comments? I've got one question for you. You talked about your sublist being full.
Yeah.
How did we get there? How did you get a full sublist?
Well.
What is your?
Okay, so it actually, it actually kind of started with trying to fill the open positions. So I have one open position at the middle school. This is going on the second year that it's been open. Interviewing people for that open position, talking to them about the position, and then also mentioning to them, we also have sub opportunities. So whenever I would, you know, try to offer a job, and if it seemed like they weren't going to accept it, I could also mention, we also have subbing opportunities. Would you consider being a sub? You can work as much as you want, you know, and you can choose the days you work. So that did help.
So in your free time, you can help us with recruiting for the other.
I got to get those remaining three filled.
And then I have to ask it because I coach a lot of middle school students.
Yeah.
They want two waffles instead of just one. Two waffles instead of one. Wendy, thank you very much for your update.
Yep.
Thanks, buddy.
All right, our next information item in the report is Human Resources. Director of Human Resources, Brandon Nelson, will provide an update and then answer any questions.
If I could add one quick thing. Mr. Nelson not only oversees human resources, but he also supervises both Peggy and Wendy. Those are recent items. And so he's part of this whole process as well. Just wanted to point that out.
Thank you for mentioning that. I'd also noticed that they did everything for their parks because they run parks. And so I want to make sure they get all the credit for everything, all the good things that happened for the school. But on to Human Resources where I have a little bit more to say and things. As a school board, you see a lot of, like Human Resources already does, you see the final product, whether it's personality items, like the bar and the agreements, a lot of the information comes to you. So I'm not going to be talking about that tonight. I'm going to highlight some of the areas that you do not always see. Looking at the department, we had some change this last year. And that is, we had an opening. And then we were able to fill with a lot of promotions. So Janet Anderson was promoted to Human Resources Manager. She's a long-term employee of the district and has been in Human Resources for many of those years. Erin Kringler replaced her as the Employee Data Coordinator. And then we welcomed Amanda Lethal to the Human Resources Employment Specialist Position to run out the rest of the team. So talk about some of the challenges. You know, we heard it already tonight about employment and recruitment. We do continue to have unfilled positions. We are in the best place we've been in years as far as filled positions. So we're making progress. We're just not to the point where I can stand up here and say we had everything filled. That is coming soon. We're doing things, everything that we can to do that. But it does propose a challenge in regards to running programs and services. And we do the best that we can. The other challenge that I wanted to highlight is teacher license special permissions. And that is, we have teachers that might have a teaching license, but they are teaching out of their scope. So they need to be teaching a special ed, but that's not what their background or what their license is in. So we need to get a special permission for that. We have 35 of those to date. And so that is something that takes an immense amount of time to get prepared. And it's a struggle to have everything in place by the start of this school year. We cannot submit applications until July 1st to the state of Minnesota that does the licensing for that. So we, it's a challenge to get everybody in place. Just a reference, you know, 15 years ago, we would maybe have a handful of these. In the last school year, we had 54. And so that is just a different landscape for me. I'm sure we now license people in front of our professors. So changes that are coming. We have two coming in January. Minnesota paid the youth. And then the laws that tend to break in meals are changing in January 1st. So we are working to get everything in place to make sure that we are set for laws, laws change. And then one change that happened in September is that the Minnesota OSHA Oweers Program now applies to elementary and secondary schools. For years, it did not apply to schools, but that change was made. The primary difference, just to give you a brief background of what that means, we have a lot of things in place that already make us compliant. In fact, a year, a few years back, our transportation department, because it's in-house, we did have to be under the Oweers Program. So we had a lot of the foundation in place. But the two things that really make a difference, we will now be spending more time on what are called near misses. So we ask people to report a near miss, and then we will spend time investigating that and doing what is needed to prevent an accident in the future. And then although we've always investigated or mostly investigated incidents in the past, we have a more formal process for that. And that's, those are the two big things that changed. And then goals, there are superintendent and school board goals that have been issued to the Human Resources Department for highly qualified educational assistance. So we will need that goal this year. It'll be 100% because we do not start individuals until they are highly qualified this year. So that goal will be met. So that goal, employees certified teachers, non-teaching positions. We were close to meeting that goal. We were within a percent last year. We still have, the part that's going to hold us back from meeting that is we have four speech-language pathologists positions that are open. They've been open for three years. We have techniques and strategies we've used to recruit them, but there are only so many speech-language pathologists out there. And there is not enough of them to meet the needs of all the school districts in the state. Then employees completing the benefits portal by during open enrollment. We put in place an electronic system last year. And so this year, we'll have a percentage that need to enroll in that to meet that goal. Employees completing vector training by November 30th. And then non-classroom teachers subbing. We have a benchmark that we're trying to improve on so that we have fewer of those situations during the school year. So that's what the Human Resources Department is going to be focusing on this year. And Stan, for any questions that you may have?
Ms. West?
My ears perked when you said special permissions because I know that ALC is looking aggressively for an agriculture ed program, teacher advisor. Would the special permissions qualify to fill that position if somebody were interested?
Yes, there is.
It's science, right?
Yeah, there's, there's two ways that that can happen. One is if maybe I am a teacher that's in an area that we have more applicants than we have teaching positions. Social studies is an example. So they already have a license. If they had an interest in that type of field, a special permission is something they could add. It's not like a teach agriculture. Or the second and probably more likely situation would be I have a bachelor's degree and I have a skill set where I could probably do well teaching these students. And I have a background in agriculture or I have some type of training that would be tied to that. Then they get what's called Tier One Special Permission to teach. So we have auto-field permissions, we have Tier One Teachers, and we have Tier Two Teachers. Tier Two Teachers, they're in a teacher preparation program, so they're moving towards licensure. But a Tier One would most likely be the best fit for an agriculture. There's probably people out there that have that skill set. If they could do well with kids, we would want them to apply for a category.
Just putting it out there.
Mr. Harper?
Yeah, I was going to say, on top of all this, lead negotiator, wisdom and compassion and time, holy cow. Like I think you said, next or two weeks from now, every single slot is fulfilled. And I appreciate all the time and effort you and your team are putting into these negotiations. I think it's negotiating in good faith, it's wisdom, it's, like I said, compassion, and I really appreciate that. And that's pretty much all you're getting, so nice work.
Thank you, and I have a lot of help. I have a lot of you sitting right here, so thank you.
I just want to ditto that, Brandon. Thank you for your wonderful...
Okay, I have two questions for you. One's kind of off of the special permissions. You said 35. Do you know how many of those are special permission into special education?
I don't have that with me right now, so, sorry.
Jill, my next one is the break in meal bars. What changes are we expecting with that?
Yeah, so there's always been a law for breaks and meals. The biggest change, so when you're looking at breaks, in the past, you had to provide adequate time for each four consecutive hours. Now you have to provide 15 minutes or longer. And in the past, it just was to utilize the restroom. Now it's to utilize the restroom and whatever. So there's more things to check. So there's time to do it on breaks. The second part is the meal bars. In the past, you just had to provide sufficient time. Now it has to be at least 30 minutes. And how often, it used to be eight or more consecutive hours. Now it's six or more consecutive hours. So a lot of what we have in place, we're probably compliant. The majority of our programs, we're compliant with this automatically. There's a few things we'll have to adjust a little bit to make sure we're fully compliant.
And then Jill's got her final question for you.
No, my question was if Rob's going equally asking everyone the same question.
Yes. What's the Human Resources stance or feeling about late starts?
All right. Well, the biggest connection that Human Resources has to that is probably in two areas. One is with cabinet discussions about it. And two is with Meet and Confere. So Meet and Confere is one, the largest group of the teachers that provide the input on the calendar. So we have that input. And then with cabinet, we're getting a lot from instruction and so on, as well as all the other programs. With the basis on instruction right now, there's... I would have to answer from a Human Resources standpoint that it is important for the late starts to do the PLCs properly. At Human Resources, we also work with our operations. And I already have heard the feedback from some of the operation end. And I don't want to dislute that either. I just, you know, the area will answer their part and you ask specifically from Human Resources.
Okay. Mr. Anderson and then...
Jessica, did you have your hand up? Okay. No, I just want to thank you as well as, once again, Wendy and Wendy for the work you guys do. It's your pleasure, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next report is administration.
Two quick topics. And first, school district officials and the police department did need to review communications during the recent fabricated social media thread. It was a really good discussion and came up with some very smart, simple changes in some of our procedures. I don't have that listed here, but they'll be easy to do and I think will, you know, further enhance our communications. The second item is radon testing. The latest report that we have for radon testing results for secondary schools and the transportation building is attached. And the results are generally good, but there was one slightly elevated reading at the middle school. There's no further action required beyond required periodic monitoring. But we felt it was important to share results, not only with the school board, but with the public. So the full report is there. Chuck is here to answer any questions, if you have any. You can either do it now or, you know, later when not during the week, either way.
Mr. Harper?
So I know on radon, as an electrician, we provide an outlet in the ceiling or about in the roof of a house so that when, if there's radon detected, they can then go up and plug in an exhaust fan. So I'm guessing radon is abated through ventilation. So are we either adding abatement or ventilation currently for that middle school to combat that? Or is our new proposed air handling units going to address the issue?
It's a great question, and that's why Chuck was invited.
With our new air handling system, that should all be taken care of with that. And when we say it's high, it's 2.1. Usually at 4.0 is when you start having issues and you want to start mitigating and get rid of it.
Okay.
So we're still underneath that. This is a, every two years, we test for radon. So this is nothing new that happens all the time. So it's just making you aware of what the results are.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you.
I have a question for Kirsten. Not being on social media and seeing what's going on, what weaknesses did we have in communicating that we're addressing?
Yeah, maybe I can give a couple of examples, and they're really simple things. So for example, you know, whenever we have a press release that involves law enforcement in any way, we're going to make sure that they get copies of that release statement, you know, immediately.
Maybe.
The police department. So, so for example, we communicated with parents and with staff members, board members about what happened on Friday when the ammunition was found on school grounds. So we did a good job writing up the message, getting it out to, you know, to those stakeholders. But we didn't send it to the police department. And so that was one of the requests they had for us, just to make sure that if there's something involving law enforcement, we include them on it, just as an FYI. I think that is such a smart, simple, no-cost effort, but it can help. There are some other things. For example, how we process emails during the, you know, the quote-unquote "what crisis". And I thought we made a really good step because Chris Lindquist and I went over to the middle school on Monday to help respond to those emails and other inquiries. And so I took over responding on behalf of Heidi Critchley because she was running the investigation. And, you know, so that was a really good start. You know, sometimes I'd meet with parents so that, you know, Heidi wasn't taking time away from the investigation. But there are little things like, at first, I didn't have a private space to do that. Well, we've identified where that's going to be in the future if that happens again at the middle school. So it's really simple things like that, you know, as far as changes in some of our procedures. Yeah, I felt really good about the actual communication efforts and the content. I know there are many people who might disagree with that because they wanted an earlier notice or they want more details. But we feel really strongly that we did not want to interfere with the investigation at all. So we didn't want to prematurely release information because that could have impacted things quite a bit. Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, so you're saying we currently have policy and procedures in place for a situation like this and we're just tweaking them? And yes, that answers my question.
I think we could memorialize those procedures more. So, you know, we have some more vague statements about that. So we could write those things down as far as what we've been doing. But then we're tweaking some of that as well.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, moving on to agenda item seven, action items. Again, as we move forward with action items, you'll each get a chance to speak. But I'm going to make sure everyone has a chance to speak before you get to have a second of that time to summarize your opinions. Two action items for tonight. First one is the bond ratifying resolution. It's a resolution relating to the just over 14 million general obligation facilities maintenance and tax abatement bonds gratifying this award of sale, prescribing the form and details of providing for the payment. Michael Hart, our representative from PTMA, will provide an overview and answer any questions. This will be a roll call. Michael, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, School Board Superintendent, Members of the Public, happy to be here. So tonight, I'm going to review the sale that we held last Monday morning related to the first part in a two-part financing structure that we started talking about, you know, a few months ago this summer, related to your parking lot projects that are funded with what we call a tax abatement bond and the indoor quality projects that were part of the school district's long-term facility maintenance plan that was approved first by the school board and then by the state of Minnesota over the last few months. This will be for my slides to Vanessa.
Yes, it's cool, man. You made it through.
Depends on patient. Yeah, I think it will be faster if you're able to. So you can go on to the next slide actually. So we held the sale last Monday morning on October 20th. And we received, we set the date to receive bids and we received bids from investment banks across the country. It's the lowest bid coming in at a true interest cost of about 3.75% from TD Financial Products in New York City. And you can see when we review that, we were really happy with the overall market rates. The fact that those top few bids are very close together tells us that we got a very competitive fair process and received a strong rate in the overall market for the school district. The next slide shows a summary of what this result is when compared with the numbers that we would have presented to you earlier in the year. And you can see that we had assumed the true interest cost of 4.59% this summer. That did include 0.3% of market cushion. So it was above market interest rate at that time for our planning purposes. But we are, you know, well more than, we're more than half a percent below what we had considered to be the market at that time. Which is, you know, so we had favorable timing. We also had a really strong bidding environment in terms of there had not been a lot of school districts in the market in recent weeks. And the overall economic news, long-term interest rates have declined very significantly over the last few months. That amounts to, when you talk about total interest cost, that's about a savings of about $1,370,000 compared to. And just on this first part compared to the numbers that we saw prior to this summer.
What was the savings, the taxpayers again?
$1,370,000. And that's a good point. I mean, this, these, these funds are all coming from the taxpayers in a bit. The local taxpayers via property tax, which is shown on the next slide. I'm showing you the tax impact that we're estimating now for the overall projects together. The numbers that I presented to you in July was a tax impact on an average home of $385,000 of about $20 a month or $239 a year. Based upon what is going to be in your final levy, which will be reduced a little bit because of these results from what you saw in September. That levy increase is about $85,000 less. When you, we also put the devaluation data in there. So that tax impact is about $218. So about $21 less than what we were expecting earlier in the year. So we're right on target inside of that expectation early on because of the favorable results. We're also presenting here some, you know, range of valuations and different property classifications in Minnesota, the property tax base, both on the type of property and on which property is valued by the county assessive. The next slide shows what this looks like in terms of your overall debt structure. And I think what's worth pointing out here, you can see the dark blue color bonds, those are the voter-proof bonds that were originally approved primarily in 2017. And then you have some green older indoor quality LTFM bonds. The blue, the lighter blue and yellow color represents the indoor quality and the abatement of this new bond issue. You see that first year is bigger than the future years. It's designed so we have a second financing to fund. The indoor quality project is a $36.2 million project. We're only funding about the first $13.5 million with this particular financing. And so we are planning for that second issue. And we do not expect taxes to go up again next year related to this project. So the second issue will fill in that gap and we would expect it to be steadily going forward. Okay? How to transparency, we have the sources and uses of funds, which shows a detail of the cost of issuance for the professional services as a part of this overall process. It also shows the breakdown of the two, the two overall purposes, the facility maintenance and the tax abatement components of this. And then in terms of the calendar or timeline, this process started formally with the school board's action on July 28th. We had a public hearing and some additional discussion at your August school board meeting. Documents were submitted to MDE. And we received approval for that in the month of September. The school district also held a rating call, actually in early October, which Moody's Investor Service provided a credit opinion. It's an allowance to a credit score for an individual. It was a, it's a really strong report. I know it's available at the district office detailing that the district, you know, financially is being managed very well at this time. We held the bond pricing. We could go, you'd have your ratifying resolution, that's the action tonight. The funds would be received by the school district on November 18th, subject to your action tonight. What's next after this? We have been working with your partners at SciLogic to understand how quickly the money will be spent. And we'll work with them through that process. And to the extent we're able to make investments and fix rate investments to maximize the interest earnings on those funds, we will do that, given when the funds are needed. Of course, those investments are very restricted and very safe types of investments. We're not talking about stock market here. We're talking about safe FDIC, insured CDs, US Treasuries, that kind of thing. And then whenever you're borrowing with tax exempt interest rates, like the school district... And then whenever you're borrowing, uh, with tax exempt interest rates like the school district is, the federal government sees that as a subsidy. It is a subsidy to the local school district, which allows you to borrow at lower interest rates. And the IRS has lots of rules tied to that. And some of those rules are about the investment of those funds and how you spend the funds going forward and will help you with the compliance and, and monitoring of those rules and regulations in order to maintain the tax exemption, which is important for you going forward. So you have a resolution in front of you tonight that ultimately ratifies the sale that was awarded last week and was held. Um, and I am happy to take any questions from school.
Any questions prior to the motion being made for Michael?
Just to, uh, take some of the financial talk out of it for the public so that everybody understands what's going on because of the moves that we made and the, um, positive market changes with this particular first charter bond. And that, like, $1 million savings is actually going to help us save money on the next round and reduce those taxes going forward.
Yes, our expectation is that, uh, taxes will be lower over the 20 years compared to what was presented to the board when it was already approved.
Do you see no more questions?
If I could, uh, just add one thing, I have to do. Want to thank, uh, Michael for your work on this. Uh, you really shepherded us through the process. And DeeDee Carey really understood our financial position, budget, and, you know, housing growth in the, in the area. I was really impressed with both of you, so thank you.
Mr. Shaw, one last minute question. How much did our fund balance help with the interest rate that we have, we got?
Yeah, so that would have, um, shown up most as a part of that credit rating report. You'd have an A1 rating as a school district today. If you remember, um, I don't exactly know how many years ago, but five to seven years ago, you did not have an A1 rating. And that would have resulted in a higher interest rate from that. And so, and when you talk about a bond rating, by far the most important metric is your general fund, unassigned, a fund balance. And so making sure that that is in a good position, which you're in a really strong position today. And you're not in an excessive position either. I mean, we're not here, we're here to be a school district, not here to be a bank, just to be an investment company. And, uh, you know, we don't want anybody to think that's what we're doing. But you're in a much stronger position and that is reflected in this. And so again, to bring it back to a credit score, you have gone from having, you know, a, a low credit score to a high credit score, which reduces your interest rate as a school district.
So I guess I'm just pointing out what the good fund balance does for us. Saves us a lot of money along the way.
It does.
Saves the taxpayers.
You have a question or something?
What are your thoughts on the 90-minute late start? I'm just kidding. Since we're asking. I'm pretty surprised you didn't answer. Just kidding, sorry.
Moment of level. Is there a second? Any discussion on that motion? No discussion. This will be a roll call vote, so if you're in favor, say aye, if you oppose, say nay. Mr. Humphrey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Shawna.
Aye.
Ms. Boxer.
Aye.
Mr. Working.
Aye.
Ms. West.
Aye.
And I, I as well, all she surveils. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
All right, next, uh, agenda item is 7.2, the school year 2026-2027 calendar. Uh, this version was, is what was presented in our last board meeting. Um, as of first reading, there have been some minor grammatical changes. We're made to put the content is the same. Mr. Anderson, if you'd like to talk, maybe answer any questions.
Uh, yeah, again, uh, as you mentioned, we made some changes that I believe Robert suggested during the meeting, uh, on the left-hand side. The, uh, meet confer committee, uh, which consists primarily of, teachers, but also some building and district administrators, uh, almost unanimously endorse this particular, uh, calendar. Not quite, 11 out of 12, I think, or 10 out of 11. And, uh, so we recognize that late starts are not ideal. So, you know, don't get me wrong on that. It is complicating, uh, for transportation, somewhat for food service and, you know, certainly for, uh, many parents. Uh, the problem we have is that, you know, we need time for professional learning communities and staff development. Uh, one of the big issues that's coming our way, and we won't know the details until after the new year starts. Uh, but we have to provide training for our, some are all secondary teachers in the science of reading. And one way we're hoping to do this, uh, with the 27, 28 calendars to provide, some or all of that training during late starts. So that's one of the, uh, big headaches that we would minimize by having, uh, continuing our late starts. But there are also means in terms of professional development and other staff development. Uh, I know Stacy worked with a group of, uh, people, uh, discussing how the content of late starts, um, could and should change. And so we're hoping to see some, uh, enhancements there as well.
All right, are there any questions prior to a motion being made? Mr. Humphrey.
Are there any options being talked about as far as, I mean, I'm meeting confer is, have we discussed any of this with our customers, like the late start thing? And then are there also, are there any other options used by other school districts that maybe mitigate that hardship?
We've looked at, uh, many options. For example, combining, uh, the late starts into a full day of professional development.
Sure.
You know, because then you're trading time and we actually really like that. The problem is that, uh, we're pretty low already on how many, um, days, you know, we have in the calendar for student contact. And so if we reduce it further by one or two days, that really complicates things. It would also require us to change many of our contracts to allow for something like that. So that's one of the options we've looked at. Uh, you know, we could consider adding days to the duty calendar for teachers. You know, that's always a possibility. Uh, there are pluses and minuses to that. You know, one of the things that I'm really intrigued about, and I don't know how this is going to shake out, uh, but we did agree at the last meet confer session to have a subgroup or, you know, at least another group, review how we do our parent teacher conferences. And, you know, are there different ways of doing it so we could free up time in the current duty date calendar for teachers to do PLC work, uh, and our staff development, um, outside of the, the school day? Uh, but that's going to be a, a lengthy discussion and, you know, I, I don't think it'd be ready for the 27 or the Shepherd for that calendar.
Sure.
But we are, uh, hoping that we could do something like that at 27, 28. So, so we're still, you know, we would like to find, uh, you know, a better solution, um, if we possibly can, but it's going to take time to figure out.
Thanks.
Any other questions before our motion? Mr. Shawna, I got a question for you. What are your thoughts on maybe in a good term?
I don't mind them, but there's quite a few others that are not. Oh, thank you. Um, I think I've made my, my standard known on this, but I just wanted to, uh, make it known yet again for those at home that have not heard of it yet. Um, while I will support this calendar, I will vote in favor of it. Uh, I would like to see or see if the recommendation could be made from the school board to get rid of late starts the following year and to go on rotation for spring break. To be right after track two and at the end of March or beginning of April. I don't know if this needs to be decided tonight or we put it on the calendar for the middle meeting.
So I would request, uh, that would be an action item. I would request, uh, a, um, request to me, uh, to add that to a, a future agenda item. Uh, I know meeting confer, that, that calendar is not coming to us instantly. I know I'll try to get it at least earlier than what we did with this one. But if, if you have it, I'd have that request, uh, sent to superintendent myself and we'll get it added to a future agenda. That work?
That works.
Mr. Anderson.
Take a motion to approve the calendar.
All right, there's a motion to approve the 2026-2027 school calendar as presented and recommended. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Work in discussion on that motion. See no discussion, uh, if you are in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion prevails. Thank you. Next agenda item is upcoming meeting and junior topics. Any other questions or comments about the upcoming meetings or topics? And I put a note on it, Rob and he will send us something on it as well. Okay, so no questions. Next one is school board member reports. Member Working, turns off tonight.
Yeah, I just, again, I wanted to thank you. And, uh, and represent Anderson for their diligence committee on that day that we had this school was, um, catch fire. Appreciate you guys for sure. It was a tough day for us as parents and the district and especially us that had little girls on the bus. Uh, so thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything else to share.
Mr. Humphrey.
Uh, I'd just like to encourage, and I think I brought this up earlier, but whoever wants to discuss things, please leave your name so I can get back to you. I'd love to have a conversation on this. Hearing lots of good input, maybe we take away the difference between girls and boys sports and just have football or just have gymnastics or, um, you know, plenty, the whole spectrum, whatever, whatever it takes. But this is in the early stages. I know it's kind of imbalanced right now, but, um, it does no good to just kind of, I mean, this is probably an outside influence, like kind of, we got a lot of things, uh, you know, otherwise they would have signed it because they would have understood that we welcome the conversation. But, um, I'd just like to encourage anyone who has a, has an interest in talking, uh, you can give me a call, 612-685-4530 or.
Yeah, that's my number.
Oh, wait, that's Rob's number. Damn it, you caught me. But, uh, so I, I just, it, nothing to run from. We all, I mean, I don't have to agree with someone to have a conversation. I'd like to learn about some of these things too and what, where you're coming from. I don't understand, uh, a lot of what's going on here. But, uh, you know, if it's important to some people, even if it's in the high minority, um, that's something that should be taken into consideration. That person's vote, if they're within our constituency, is every bit as important as anyone else's. Um, although not signing this, this kind of looks like some sort of national talking point thing. So I'll take it as that since no one signed it, but please, uh, get ahold of us, let's have a conversation. Thank you.
Number Boxer. And for Shawna.
Well, for me, Kelly, no, just to go. Um, congrats, Monty isn't here anymore, but congrats with Monty. If you don't know him, he's just a great man. Just, you lock in there, just a smile on his face, he just welcomes everybody into that building. Um, went, uh, we had technology negotiations, I think we have a TA with them. Um, went to the blood drive last week, got an update there. It was, the turnout was amazing. I went in there, that was my first time going into that high school, I go in a different place, I can't remember. What was it, probably 10 beds there? It was amazing how many people were there. Um, what else we got? Oh, delegate assembly, I got voted back in, so thank you for those that voted for me. Uh, and then I donate a lot of stickers and vinyl and stuff to the district. And it's just gotten to a point where I need to start charging because it's just more than I can keep doing. I don't know if the board will support me charging for some of the stuff that I do, but I can still donate a vast majority. Um, if there's any recommendation on what to do with that. Or I just make a detailed list of what is done and what's in charge or just, donate what I can and leave the rest to others to do. What is that for?
Yeah, maybe that's something that, uh, Brandon, Chuck and I could discuss, you know, um, because I, I get where you're coming from. Every time I walk under the entrance into the high school, I know that you did it. And walk through the elementary schools with all the stuff on the walls and the floors, you did it. The insignia, they're, you know, they're just all over. And, uh, that costs time and money for you. And so, but perhaps, I think that's something that we can discuss and then we can bring it to the board.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look with our lawyer on the conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Piece as well and have it brought back.
Thank you, that's it.
Number Anderson.
Just been attending negotiations and want to thank old Brandon Person for all the referred conflict of interest. There'd be also some intending though, because Brandon's keeping us really busy scheduling like two, three, four weeks. So it's good, we're getting it wrong. That's all I have.
Thank you. Number West.
Um, a couple of things, um, I worked at Acida Creek and Monty was, um, there at the time and the students adored. He was, he was always a popular name. Um, labor negotiations, if you are interested in, um, what's going on with labor negotiations, you can go to the Safe France website. Go to, um, give me one second, to our home. Go to the menu and the dropdown tab leads you to district info. And if you go all the way down to the bottom in the district info tab, it will take you to the information, um, regarding where we're currently at with negotiations. The only reason it won't be posted on there or it will be frozen if it's under mediation. Um, and then it tends to be, um, not advertised or put out there. So there's a lot of good information regarding, um, you know, where everybody's at on the, uh, negotiations. And negotiations, correct me if I'm wrong, are open to the public unless they are, um, under mediation.
Yeah, if there's at least one school board member present.
Yeah, so anybody who's interested, um, and wants to learn about how negotiations work, who can they reach out to to find out the schedule? Because it's pretty crazy, but it's, it's interesting to find out if you want to attend a negotiation as a, a bystander.
I think the best person to contact would be Brandon.
Would be Brandon, Brandon, yeah. They are open to the public and they're, they're interesting, they're good. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, same thing, attended teacher negotiations, uh, again, still working through language on, on some of those areas. And then, uh, we're seeing progress across the board. Uh, happy to say that the community engagement task force started tonight. Again, that's our superintendent, it was a little bit late to talk, I mean, uh, members I think were at 19 or 20, or it actually might be over that now.
Yeah, I think, uh, I left and there are, I think, uh, lower twenties.
Perfect, so, uh, nice to see that, that task force going forward. Um, I told you I was going to start the meeting with this and I'll get better eventually, but our reach for the stars quote, uh, what I picked out today is to build a relationship that lasts years. So that's a, um, hopes and goals is for our staff is to build relationships that last years. And then the other one was to make everyone feel welcome as they come into our facilities. And I was supposed to do it at the beginning because that's exactly what Monty does. Uh, and Monty is that definition, uh, exactly, and that's why he got the same star award. Uh, but two awesome goals that our district staff have. And then the last piece I have is I'm going to switch up the seating so Rob and Jacob don't have to fight. Going forward.
You touched me.
Yes, and then I'm referring, uh, a few seconds to Barb for the play that I was supposed to mention. Do you have details, Barb?
I do. I should have mentioned this, Allison Wonderland, um, is November, uh, 6th, 7th, 8th and 9th and at the high school. So that play, Allison Wonderland, coming up, and you know, they always do an incredible job with those performances. So, um, we encourage people to go watch the play.
Perfect. Uh, two more items before our next school board meeting. There is an election, uh, for a vacant school board position. So please, uh, encourage all of the residents to go out and take a vote. Uh, it's important for us to get out and vote and help us fill that in. And then the other, uh, bless you, the other thing is the Veterans Day at the middle school. The other thing is the Veterans Day at the middle school. You saw a post, if you're on social media, about this today as well. The first one is at the middle school on Monday, November 10th, which is before our board meeting. And then I'll remind you again for the high school one on Tuesday, the 11th. But 8 o'clock to 8:45, it is open to the public.